All right, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Belvidere City Council Regular Meeting of July 21st, 2025. If the clerk will help me with the roll call, please.
Albertini.
Here.
Brereton.
Here.
Flurry.
Here.
Frank.
Here.
Gramkowski.
Here.
Hoynes.
Here.
McGee.
Here.
Montalbano.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Ten present.
All right, if you'll stand with me and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, we thank you for our country, community, our families, and our freedom and our sovereignty. Lord, we thank you for our current military service members, for the men and women veterans who've served and sacrificed throughout our history. We pray that you continue to bless them, each one of them and their families. Thank you for their heroic sacrifice. We thank you for our police fire, paramedic first responders in our community and all across this country, who serve our citizens and bravely respond no matter what the call. We pray for their well-being and ask that you be with them as they continue to serve our communities. Tonight, as we conduct our city's business here this evening, we pray for guidance, and they give each of us passions, patience, compassion, understanding, wisdom, strength, and courage. We pray for these things, in Christ's name. All right, I don't believe we have anybody registered for public comment. Item four, approval of the minutes. A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Belvidere City Council dated July 7th, 2025, as presented. If I could have a motion to that effect, please. Motion by Alderman Montalbano, second by Alderman Hoynes, thank you. Any questions, any corrections regarding the motion on the floor? Feel free. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. Item five, public hearing, we have none. Special messages and proclamations, we have none here this evening. Item seven, approval of expenditures. First, we have general and special fund expenditures in the amount of $2,852,545.28. If I could get a motion to that effect, please. Motion by Alderman Peterson, second by Alderman McGee, thank you very much. Any questions regarding any of the expenditures in front of you tonight on general and special fund? Alderman Peterson.
Do, thank you, Mayor. I have a question on page 38, under landfill of 50,000. And I was going to ask, and Brent's not here, but maybe you can make a note of it, Jordan. I was wondering if it'd be possible for the council to get more of a breakdown on exactly what that amount constitutes? What is that buying? And even if we could, if we could get some kind of a breakdown, I know it's been closed for 30 years, and it'd be nice, I think it's kind of getting off track a little bit, but I'd like to see, the council wouldn't want to get an exit strategy going so that we're not buying into this in perpetuity. I think we've been more than generous thus far, and we've got a tremendous amount of money invested in something that we don't own.
We can do that, and we do have that information.
Wouldn't it be possible to include it in a packet?
Absolutely.
Senate committee? Good, maybe committee, if you would, with the mayor's approval?
Sure. We will, and I know I've had some discussions about Brent on some of those costs, and I think some of those have changed, but we'll bring it back to the council. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
All right, is there any other questions, any comments regarding general and special fund expenditures? Alderman Brereton.
Thanks, Mayor. I have two questions here, for anybody who'd like to answer them. First one, I couldn't help but notice because it's right on the first page, it's the very first item, ASCAP. I know that's a music publisher. I have no problem paying them, but I just wondered what music we were licensing, what that's for?
Anytime there's music played in the city anywhere, we're responsible. And we've always paid this, this has been on here for probably over 20 years.
Thanks, I kind of figured it was, I was just clarifying. And then I had another question on page 51. And that question is for whoever wants to answer it as well. I just see the architect. Don't know what that noise is, but I see the architect fees remodeling. I just, I didn't know what project that was, if I could get a reminder.
That's the police department's. I believe that's for the remodel at the PSB.
Yeah, we brought in Alman Ernest to take a look at the patrol office, used impact fees to pay for them to do a rendition of what it would look like and cost to remodel the patrol office.
Okay, thanks, Chief. I kind of figured that's what it was, but just wanted to double check. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Any other questions? Alderman Peterson.
There's one more, and he has page 42, under Boone County Treasure, for the urban transportation at 41,000.
That's for the Keenage Center bus, is that right?
That's for the Keenage Center, and that's the yearly amount we give them.
Is that a 50% break, or how, I forget now how we broke that up?
I'm not for sure, it's 50%, but I can look into that.
I believe if it isn't, it's awful close, but it's my understanding it is, but we'll see. We can find out the exact share.
That's what I assumed it was, but just wanted to confirm.
Sure.
Yep, thanks.
As far as I know, it is, but we'll see. Any other questions? Thank you. Any other questions regarding the motion on the floor? Feel free to ask. All right, hearing none, we have a motion on the floor to approve general and special fund expenditures in the amount of $2,852,545.28. Hearing no other questions, all those in favor, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
Albertini.
Aye.
Brereton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Gramkowski.
Aye.
Hoynes.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Montalbano.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And then we also have this evening water and sewer fund expenditures in the amount of $611,247.87. If I could have a motion to that effect, please. Motion by the woman Frank, second by Alderman Peterson. Thank you both. Any questions regarding those expenditures? Feel free to ask. Alderman Peterson.
Mayor, I just had one on page 60, the AquaFix, the AquaFix for the grease cleanup for 10,040. Is that a supplies expense for the treatment plant, Jordan? Do you know?
Correct, and that was because of the issues we had with deans sending us high BOD load. So we then had to use that to get the plant back in order, so. But we ended up charging deans for that price, so.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, just to let the council know that we have had a, an issue with ice cream or cream coming into the plant, and what happens is, is my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, Jordan, is that if it gets into the plant, we have the bug, the bugs, the organisms that live at the plant and make the plant function, which are vital to a plant function, but they end up, it ends up killing a certain amount of bugs. So we have had some issues with that in the past, it's my understanding. It hasn't been that big of an issue because our largest water user was Stellantis, and when they were online, it was a big dilution down at the plant. But that isn't the case anymore, and if there's more to it than that, Jordan, feel free.
No, you hit the nail on the head.
Okay. All righty, yeah, so that answers your question, but yeah, that was invoiced, so, thank you. Any other questions from anybody regarding the water and sewer expenditures? Feel free to ask. All right, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion on the floor for the water and sewer expenditures, approved in the amount of $611,247.87. Will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
Brereton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Gramkowski.
Aye.
Hoynes.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Montalbano.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Albertini.
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. Item eight, committee reports and minutes of city officers. For the record, items A through G have been placed on file at the clerk's office. And flipping the page, item H would be the minutes of the committee of the whole building, planning, zoning, and public works dated July 14th, 2025. If I could have a motion for their approval? Motion by the woman Gramkowski, thank you, second by Alderman Peterson, thank you both. Any questions, any comments, any corrections? Alderman Flurry?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make a comment on 6B, growth dimensions funding request. It was previously stated that the outgoing council is what approved the growth dimensions. I just wanted to clarify that according to the regular meeting, meeting minutes from April 7th, both of those older persons were absent for the vote. I think a more accurate description would be, we had, for this vote, we did have two new older persons, but also we had two older persons change their vote from support to not, and obviously they're certainly entitled to change that vote, just wanted to clarify that. And then, secondly, in the past, we did get a growth dimensions monthly update. Just wondering if that will continue, and if not, how will the council be updated on economic development within the city?
Well, I don't know if it will or not. I mean, the city taxpayers are still paying, as county residents, we're still paying, you know, the county taxes, so growth dimension does in fact represent the city as well, part of the county. As a county representative or a resident, you wouldn't pay city taxes, but vice versa, yes. So I would assume that would continue, I haven't heard that it's not going to. And I think regarding your comment about the council, I think in general, it was a, it was a new incoming council, it was an outgoing council in general, not to be specific, but in general, so. Anyhow, I don't know, as far as I know, those, there will still be a presentation here. I haven't heard otherwise, but if I do, I'll let you know.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions or comments? Feel free. All right, hearing none, we have a motion on the floor to approve the minutes of the committee of the whole building, planning, zoning, public works dated July 14th of 2025. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. On item nine, unfinished business, ordinance 730H is in front of you this evening for a second reading, that's an ordinance authorizing execution of an annexation agreement between the city of Belvidere, Blackhawk, and Blackhawk Reserve LLC and Country Homes LLC. If I could have a motion to that effect, please. Motion by Alderman Peterson, second by Alderman Stevens, thank you both. Any questions, any comments regarding that motion on the floor? Feel free to ask. Okay? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Gramkowski.
Aye.
Hoynes.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Montalbano.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Albertini.
Aye.
Brereton.
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And item 9B is in front of you tonight for a second reading as well, ordinance 731H, that being an ordinance annexing certain territory lying north of US Business Route 20 and east of Beaver Valley Road to the city of Belvidere, Boone County, Illinois. That is A, B, and C of Platte One at the Deer Hills Project Annexation. Correct me if I'm wrong, city attorney. Okay. If there's any, could I have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Stevens, second by Alderman Peterson, thank you. Any questions regarding that motion on the floor? It's part of trying to be able to mop that up, and we have been able to do that, and I think, believe me, that's a good thing, not only for right now, but for the future. And it's been a long time, so, coming. Any questions? Feel free to ask. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to approve ordinance 731H, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
Frank.
Aye.
Gramkowski.
Aye.
Hoynes.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Montalbano.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Albertini.
Aye.
Brereton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. I don't know, we fixed it. All right, item 10, A, Resolution 2025-11, that being a resolution establishing a donation policy for the city of Belvidere. If I could have a motion to that effect, please. Motion by Alderman Montalbano, second by Alderman Hoynes, thank you both. Any questions, any comments regarding that motion? Feel free to ask. Alderman Brereton?
Thank you again, Mayor. Again, I have two questions on this one, first one, for whoever might be able to answer it. Was this policy, did any surrounding communities adopt a policy similar to this that might have inspired this?
Not that I'm aware of.
That was my first question. And then my second question is about the $500 maximum. Is that, is there like, is it like an annual 500, or a per person, or per household? Or is there any kind of cap on that? For anybody?
No, I don't believe there is.
Cap on how many times they can donate, is that what you're asking, sir?
Correct.
No, at this point, there was nothing built into the language that capped anybody's donation. I think the concern that we were looking at is making sure that the donations that we were accepting were going to be legitimate and not give the appearance of impropriety, which we've kind of explained, there are several levels of being able to check and balance whoever donates. And if at any point, you know, whether it be Sarah, or somebody from the police department, or even the council themselves sees something that just doesn't appear right, there's always the ability to vote to not accept that donation. The impetus for this, Alderman Brereton, was, as I think was discussed with the council some time ago, the, it would apply to any department, the police department was the first to come up with the idea, was when they're, for example, doing a K-9 demonstration or something like that, they have the ability to allow people to make donations, scan a QR code and make a donation. The problem with it was the city's longstanding practice of taking donations to city council, to have every single donation accepted, which is not something a lot of communities do. They don't have a policy, they just accept them, and just don't even have a policy on it. This allows that kind of donation to happen so that every time somebody wants to make a quick donation with a credit card or have you, it doesn't have to go to city council, because obviously that transaction takes place very quickly. But the finance department, as well as the officer who handles this practice at the police department, has the ability to see, if they see the same credit card and the same name coming up routinely, they can raise that flag and then bring it to council if need be. But it still preserves the ability for anything over $500 to require that to come to council, because we knew the council did prefer to have those larger donations reviewed before they were accepted.
Alderman Brereton?
Yeah, well, thank you. I'm sure the intention is good, I don't doubt that, but I just, I don't know if I'm comfortable with it. But that's all I had, thank you.
Yeah. Do you have anything else? Chief, Chief Woody, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just one more thing. I mean, this kind of came about in an attempt to keep up with technology as it stands today, and in an attempt to garner as many donations as we possibly can, whether it be for the K-9 program, or something else for the police department, and potentially, you know, other departments throughout the city could utilize this as well. And the approval process kind of conflicted with the technology that we have with accepting donations electronically or digitally. So this was just an attempt to try and address that, is all.
Understood, thank you again.
And just so that we're, so that we have clarity, I do want to read, there are four, there are four parts to this resolution. Item one, the mayor and each department head or their designee may accept donations on behalf of the city up to $500 without approval, without prior approval of the corporate authorities of the city of Belvidere. Item two, acceptance of any donations in excess of $500 requires the approval of the city council. Item three, all donations received unless otherwise directed by the corporate authorities shall be placed in the city's general fund and shall be considered unrestricted funds. When funds are donated, with the understanding that they will be utilized, that they be utilized for a specific purpose, example, K-9, CPR materials, et cetera, every effort shall be made to honor such a request. However, that may not always be possible or practical. All donations shall be properly accounted for, subject to audit, and shall be reseeded through the finance department. So we've tried to make it, and I think it is a good thing. I think if individuals want to, want to make a donation that is under $500, I think it, there's a lot of worthwhile donations that we have received for $500 or less than 500. And I think we just had one for the K-9 that was $501 from Myers-Kennels. So I think it's pretty transparent, it does give us a chance to accept donations a little bit easier in the electronic age. All of them will be transparent, so. I thought we fixed it. Not mine. All right, if there's any other questions, feel free to ask regarding the motion on the floor. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
Gramkowski.
Aye.
Hoynes.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Montalbano.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Albertini.
Aye.
Brereton.
No.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And motions forwarded from committee of the whole building, planning, zoning, and public works of July 14th, 2025. Motions out of planning, zoning, Chairman McGee, good evening.
Good evening, yeah, thank you, Mayor. A, motion to waive building and zoning fees for Habitat for Humanity project at 309 Gilman Avenue.
Okay, we have that motion out of committee. That motion was for $880, as I believe it was. And if there's any questions, now would be the time to ask, anybody? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
Hoynes.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Montalbano.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Albertini.
Aye.
Brereton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Gramkowski.
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. Item B?
B, motion to approve the allocated amount of $27,373 for the downtown facade improvement grant as proposed in memo dated July 2, 2025, from community development planner Gina Del Ros.
All right, we have that motion out of committee. If there's any questions or comments regarding the motion on the floor? Floor's open, feel free. And hearing none, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
McGee.
Aye.
Montalbano.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Albertini.
Aye.
Brereton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Gramkowski.
Aye.
Hoynes.
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. Chairman McGee?
Thank you. C, motion to consent to and approve the appointment of Mrs. Alexandra Omietek to the Belvidere Historic Preservation Commission for a three-year term ending April 30, 2028.
All right, we have that motion out of committee. If there's any question on the appointment of Ms. Omietek, now would be the time to ask. Want to thank her, obviously, for donating her time and efforts. It's hard to get individuals sometimes to participate or donate their time, so certainly appreciate that. Hearing no comments or questions, all those in favor of the appointment, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
Montalbano.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Albertini.
Aye.
Brereton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Gramkowski.
Aye.
Hoynes.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. Chairman?
And D, motion to consent to and approve the appointment of Mrs. Lisa Kumero to the Belvidere Historic Preservation for a three-year term ending April 30, 2028.
All right, we have that motion to the Belvidere Historic Preservation as well. And if there's any questions regarding Ms. Kumero, Mrs. Kumero, please feel free to ask. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to appoint Lisa Kumero to the Belvidere Historic Preservation for a three-year term that ends on April 30th, 2028, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
Peterson.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Albertini.
Aye.
Brereton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Gramkowski.
Aye.
Hoynes.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Montalbano.
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion passed, thank you, and item E.
E, motion to consent to and approve the appointment of Mr. Paul Engelmann to the Belvidere Planning and Zoning Commission for a five-year term ending May 2030.
All right, we have that motion out of committee. If there's any questions, any comments, now would be the time to ask. Want to thank Paul for his service. I think this is maybe his, I know he said one. Want to thank Paul for his service, I think this is maybe his, I know he said one term, maybe two, I think, so he's been here for quite a while. Alderman Brereton?
Quick question, just noticed, why is there a difference in the terms, why is that a five-year?
It's statutory.
The first two are for historic preservation, this is for planning and zoning, that's two different committees.
My mistake, thank you.
Alrighty, any other questions, feel free to ask. Regarding Mr. Engelmann, hearing none, all those in favor of the appointment of Paul Engelmann to the Planning and Zoning Commission for another five-year term ending May of 2030. All those in favor, will when their name is called, answer aye, any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
Stevens?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
Hoynes?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Montalbano?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion passed, thank you, Chairman McGee, flipping to the last page, motion out of public works, Chairwoman Gramkowski, good evening.
Good evening, thank you. Item F, motion to approve purchasing a replacement Dinkmar Curb Runner chassis from RNOW Inc. in the amount of $50,200. The chassis will be paid for from Public Works impact fees, which has a current balance of approximately $60,000.
All right, we have that motion out of committee, if there's any questions regarding the motion on the leaf machine, which is important, we need it, feel free to ask. All right, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, will when their name is called, answer aye, any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
Albertini?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
Hoynes?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Montalbano?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion passed, thank you, item G?
Motion to approve the proposal from Saroni Piping in the amount of $42,336 for replacement of the MAU, M-A-U, in the office lab filter building at the wastewater treatment plant. This work will be paid for from sewer depreciation line item sixty-one dash one seven nine zero.
All right, we have that motion out of committee, if there's any questions regarding the motion on the floor, feel free to ask, anyone? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, will when their name is called, answer aye, any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
Hoynes?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Montalbano?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion passed, thank you, thank you, Chairwoman Gramkowski, moving on, motions out of finance and personnel, Chairwoman Frank, good evening.
Thank you, Mayor. H, motion to not reinstate the 1% grocery tax.
All right, we have that motion out of committee, if there's any questions, any comments regarding the motion, feel free to comment, anybody? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, will when their name is called, answer aye, any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
Hoynes?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Montalbano?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion passed, thank you, thank you, Chairwoman Frank, motions out of public safety, Chairman Peterson, good evening.
Good evening, thanks, Mayor, we have a motion to authorize the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Belvidere and Belvidere School District number one hundred, July fourteenth, 2025, Chief Woody meant memo.
Alrighty, we have that motion on the floor, if there's any questions regarding the motion on the floor, feel free to ask, anybody? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, will when their name is called, answer aye, if there's any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
Frank?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
Hoynes?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Montalbano?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion passed, thank you.
We have item J, a motion to accept check number twenty-seven four twenty-one from Myers Kennel Inc. in the amount of $501 even for the Belvidere Police Department K-9 program.
All right, we have that motion out of committee, if there's any questions, any comments regarding the motion to accept the donation from Myers Kennel, floor's open, Alderman Albertini?
Thank you, Mayor, I see this check is for $501, in the future, would we have to go through a motion to do this, or would it be accepted under the $500 rule?
It'd be over 500.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know, thank you.
Yes, sir, yep. $501 would qualify it, too. All right, any other questions, feel free to ask. All right, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, will when their name is called, answer aye, any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
Hoynes?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Montalbano?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion passed, thank you, and item K?
And in K, we have a motion to approve the Belvidere Police Department street closure request of North Main Street from East Perry Street, East Menominee Street on Tuesday, August fifth, 2025, from five o'clock PM to nine o'clock PM for national night out.
All right, we have that motion out of committee, if there's any questions or comments, chief, if you wanted to make any, or any of the council's questions regarding the motion on the floor, feel free. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, please signify by saying aye, any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
Hoynes?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Montalbano?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion passed, thank you, and last, item L?
A motion to accept the proposal from Jake Whacker Plumbing in the amount of $4,000 even for the replacement of the urinal and sink in the men's bathroom at Station One, with funding to be provided from line item zero one dash five dash two twenty dash sixty ten, station repair and maintenance.
All right, we have that motion out of committee, if there's any questions, any comments, feel free to ask. I know Chief Shadle would be able to answer those questions, thank you, chief. All right, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, will when their name is called, answer aye, any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
McGee?
Aye.